AC after.
Yeah, AC.
After.
AC, there we go.
AC two. Is there is there a motion to do that?
I'm waiting.
I'm going to amend your motion, Commissioner Moore.
Well, you would.
I will uh move uh to amend the agenda. Putting AB one after AC two.
Is there support?
For what to adopt there.
Okay, support by Fletcher. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, we're moving forward with the amended agenda. Um, cor- communications and correspondence, uh, we have not officially received any, any commissioners. No. Any correspondence, all right, moving on. We have no presentations requested this evening, so uh I will open public comment at seven oh two.
Yo.
And.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, and so this is um a general public comment, so uh people uh wishing to address the planning commission on matters which are not on the public hearing portion. So this would be anything except public hearing for QuickTrip and the public hearing for the Scioto Township Fire Station. Um, such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except for a representative or spokesperson of an organization shall have five minutes. So with that, I will um ask if there's anyone present that wants to address the planning commission on something, anything other than the two public hearings this evening. See no one, and we do have people in attendance, see anyone online?
No.
No one online with their hand raised, or no one?
No one online with their hand raised.
Oh.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment, so moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, a public comment is closed at seven oh three. Next is approval of minutes of our eight eleven uh planning commission meeting. Commissioner Hyde.
I had one that I wanted to ask about. The way on page five and six. It it talks about our, and it depends on when we get to the chicken ordinance itself, but it says that we had some discussion about predator proofing and that if you go down to the commissioners reached a consensus that in bold one was removed predator predator proof terminology. That's not exactly how I remember. I remember we talked about that, we talked about eliminating it, but then it was said that predator proof could just be thought of as you know, you can't make anything really proof. So it is a terminology of thought more than. So I wanted to say that we did not remove that from the new ordinance language.
What line?
Either this is correct, page uh five and six, yeah, at the bottom in the middle of six of the minutes themselves. So either this is not right yet, or the new language in the ordinance didn't get marked up this way. So how do people remember that discussion?
I remember it as you remember it. I think we kind of consensus as a verb. Probably made reference. We did talk. Make reference to another ordinance that defines a class of animals and take chickens out of their.
Well, that's the different subject.
That's a different issue.
This this was an enclosure that was predator proof and and the question is the predator proofness.
That.
And maybe we could just amend it so it's predator and then proof is in parentheses, so it was really the proof art that people were or were thinking was.
Then we can discuss in the chicken ordinance, how to do that. I could go with that, okay with that.
Yeah, the re- the re- the newest version does not delete it, and I remembered that we talked about deleting it, but then as we discussed it, we felt like it was vague enough that it wasn't onerous to owners.
Right, that's how I think we should make the minutes say.
Yes, the minutes are incorrect.
Okay, so we want to amend the minutes to um.
Delete that.
Just delete the remove predator proof terminology.
That would, that would work, yep. See what we want to do when we get there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nope.
No, you're right, that's completely different than what we had consensus.
Herbs, so good, okay.
Okay.
With that, I would move that we approve the amended minutes.
Okay, or by uh.
Kendall.
Kendall. No, with the handle, no, Fletcher.
Fletcher.
Yep.
Mask.
All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of um approving the minutes with the removal of removed predator predator proof terminology?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, it is uh proved as amended. Right? Then uh we're moving on to our public hearings this evening, we have uh two public hearings and um just the the way public hearings are conducted is um they will be done one at a time and there is a sign in sheet for each of the public hearings. Um, so if you're planning to speak, you can sign in afterwards if you'd like. Um, it's uh as a matter to sign in. Um, and typically what we do is we hear from the applicant and then um we do have um I think our planner um Doug is on on Zoom with us, will hear from the planners review and any engineering review. Um, and uh uh opportunity for uh questions of fact and then we open it up to the public for public comment. All right, and the same kind of public comment um rules of of three minutes for an individual and five minutes for uh an organization and we'll just remind you of you're running over, so with that, start this, okay, um. Um, so moving ahead, I'll open a public hearing oh eight two five zero zero four, a QuickTrip Corporation rezoning R one C three.
Hello.
Good evening and welcome.
Um, I was wondering if I could screenshot, I do have a presentation.
Yeah, what you need to do is join the Zoom and then we can promote you to um a presenter, you'll be able to present. Yeah, just raise your hand and so we can see it, yeah. Those are a lot of reminders on that laptop.
Are you this, there's Skylar Evans?
I am.
As this, and just uh to us here, um. I'll go ahead and introduce myself, uh, chairman and commissioner, I appreciate your time today. Uh, my name is Skylar Evans, I am the project manager for QuickTrip as a QuickTrip employee. Um, today we're gonna be uh talking about um QuickTrip, really want to introduce the company as a whole, kind of what we what we do uh within the communities. Um, and then at the end, kind of get into our requests. Um, do want to mention that we will be rescinding the current application that we have for the straight rezoning and we currently have uh conditional rezoning, um, septic variants um in with the city. Um, so those will begin the review process here shortly, uh, those documents were sent back in after the review and the staff recommendation.
So a reason for a rezoning with septic, what?
So currently our application is just for a, is it just a rezone? Uh, what we are changing it to is a conditional rezone uh along with septic variants. Sorry, it doesn't seem to want to flip through here, give me one second.
And you're welcome to sit down too, if it's easier to sit around the computer that way.
Um, so we'll go with the.
The little. Septic variants there, so. Yes, because this is zone from uh sewer district and that's not a sewer district, right, so they want to go to Silver Cat.
You can keep going, okay, perfect. Um, so just a little bit about QuickTrip, um, so we started in nineteen fifty eight. We are a private company, um, so what that allows us to do is we're able to maintain our high standards um without necessarily having to worry about public entities coming in and wanting to change how we think. Um, as of right now, we have just under twelve hundred stores nationwide. We do not franchise anything out, so they're all owned and operated by the company, um, which is still operated by the founding family, so their family is still continuing to operate the company. Um, right now we have just a little over thirty five thousand employees. Uh, that includes our store employees, the ones that are customer facing, as well as our facility support, um, and all of our other corporate positions. Um, couple more things about QuickTrip, uh, we're continually in the best one hundred companies to work for. Um, top one hundred privately held companies. Each location creates an average of twenty jobs, um, this one would be between twenty five and thirty, uh, between part time and full time positions. Um, even through COVID, we never laid anybody off, uh, we like to keep our employees, we incentivize our employees to stay long term. Every year we donate five percent of our profits, last year that was a little over fifty million dollars. Um, those go to a couple organizations that then disperse those out into the communities that we work in. Um, Bolts of Honor is a really big one for us, as well as United Way, um, we donate a lot to the United Way charity, um, and work with them, our employees will go out and help do um their, the stuff with them. Uh, we're also a national safe place, um, if you aren't familiar with what national safe place is, there's a lot of um government buildings, um libraries, things like that that are part of this program. Um, what allows us to do is we work with, um, if the youth feels like they're in a dangerous situation, they're able to come into our store, they can work with our um employees in the store who are trained to work with police, national safe place, as well as our service center. Um, so big thing about us is we do a lot of things internally, so our service center is also manned in Tulsa and Dallas, um, by QuickTrip employees, we do not outsource that, so it's a continuous um good working relationship between our store employees as well as our service center. Um, after we get in touch with the proper people, we'll work, we'll have the youth come back with us in a safe location of the store and wait until the national safe place representative comes up and is able to take that person to the right place. Uh, we also do a lot of stuff for our schools along with volunteering, um, and some programs like that. We also do what's called curriculum, the math teachers from fourth to sixth grade can apply for this math kit. Um, it comes in and teaches kids real life counting, um, with money and stuff like that, at the end of the week, they get to take their big Q drink coupon as a paycheck, go into the store and they can buy their own drink for them. Um, couple things um about how QuickTrip incorporates itself within our local communities, um, a lot of things with uh, one of our really, two of our really big kicks right now, um, that we're donating to is fire departments and police departments. Um, two years, two years ago, so twenty twenty three, we donated just a little over thirty uh three million dollars to the Phoenix um police department, and they distributed it out to the nonprofits for the police department. Um, we also donated seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to um police units out in uh Georgia. Um, and then uh Overland Park, Kansas, we did five hundred thousand dollars just last month in July, um, to help the police department with fire training. Um, and then, you know, Dallas, we also donated one point six million dollars, I think that was last year as well, um, to the police and fire departments. Um, couple more things, um. On average, we generate one point three million dollars in state and local taxes. Uh, we always promote from within, um, I'm a really good example of that, uh, six years ago as an overnight manager in the stores in Tulsa. Um, I did two years in the stores and then I did two years in the service center, um, doing the IT and security side of it. Um, and then now I've been in real estate for almost three years. Uh, about ninety percent of our employees have started in the store, so as either a clerk, manager, um, or a facility support um person. And then the ten percent that has not started in the stores, even if you have a doctorate degree, we send you back to the stores, you do a couple shifts in the stores, um, working with those store employees to understand how um our whole operation works. Um, as of this last May, uh, we have twelve hundred people that are currently employed at QuickTrip that are millionaires, eighty percent of them are in the stores uh wearing the red shirts and khakis. Uh, we also incentivize our employees uh through a program called um Best of the Best. So each division, uh, we have certain standards that we have to maintain, we have secret shoppers come in on a weekly basis um determining customer service, food service, and how clean the facilities are inside and out. Um, that accumulates throughout the whole year and at the end of the year, QuickTrip pays for that store, for that division, um, and sends all of the best of the best from each division out on a vacation. Last year they went to Atlantis, um, the year before, uh, QuickTrip went out on a cruise ship and sent everybody to Rome. Um, so we do a lot of things to help incentivize the employees to maintain our high standards as well as our work. Um, we do a lot of uh employee programs, uh, we support each other and the company supports its employees, so we do tuition assistance, um, that's for the employees, uh, we do scholarships for family. Um, we do daycare assistance in our established divisions, as we get divisions established, we start to integrate those policies and try to work with daycares to set up something. Because our employees have such strange schedules, we try to work something out to where we can um let our employees that do do the overnight shifts and the swing shifts like that, childcare. Um, we also do an employee disaster fund and this is out of the goodness of the employees' hearts, um, we don't have to donate, but many of us do. And um a really good example of what this does is the hurricanes and the floods that happened in the Carolinas. Um, a lot of our employees were able to take advantage of this employee disaster program to help get them back on their feet, get the clothes and food and everything that they needed while they were waiting on insurance um to come through for. Um, about our operations, so as I mentioned, we're a private company, this allows us to maintain our high standards. Um, and because we're a private company, we don't allow um another company to come in and attach to us, so our food program is also a QuickTrip program. It's main, it's ran by the QuickTrip employees, we're able to maintain the standards from the store side as well as on our food side. Um, across the nation, um, you'll be able to see the same standard, this is a well kept appearance, um, clean shaven, khaki pants, red shirt or shorts, um, you get a name tag, so you always know who you're working, who's working um in the stores. We also have a standard on the register of three employees or three customers to one employee, so as soon as a fourth customer comes up to the check stand to check out, a second employee will come up, clear the line, and then go back to doing what they were doing. Um, as I mentioned, we have secret shopper visits, um, and then we also have, each shift gets what's called a DOF, um, it's our daily workload, um, kind of tells us what needs to be maintained throughout the store, so uh included in that's power washing parking lots, cleaning trash cans in the dumpster area. Bathrooms are cleaned every thirty minutes, um, trash runs and parking lots are picked up on the thirty minute schedule as well, so uh, we don't have overflowing trash cans, we don't have trash flying around our parking lot. Um, some of the things that uh QuickTrip does that's more uh new age is we have our QuickTrip app. Um, you can order from the app and if you pull up to the store and you're getting gas, you can tell us what pump you're on through the app and we'll bring that food out to you. Can also order stuff from the store side, so if you wanted a bottle of Mountain Dew or Coke or something like that, pack of chips and you have kids in the car, you can order that on the app, we'll bring it out to you in the parking space, so you don't have to leave your vehicle. Um, we always have free air at our locations, so we cross the nation, we don't charge. Um, and then uh we we go above and beyond, I personally changed tires in our parking lots before, um, it happens a lot, our employees are willing to go out there and get dirty. Um, something that's super important um to me, I worked on both sides of this, from being in the store as well as on the security side, so the picture you see here, um, that whole wall is covered with TV screens, so our security systems, we have about ninety cameras in our stores, um, I want to preface this that we don't cause crime. Um, we just want to make sure that everybody understands that they are in a safe location. Um, we work really well with a lot of our local police departments and some of our areas we've integrated, I can't remember what the name is of it, but there's a new system where the police departments are able to tag directly into our camera feeds. Um, so we've worked with that, um, I believe it's in Dallas in another division right now, but um, we started integrating that with the police departments that are doing that. Um, and it's uh had a very positive, very positive experience. Um. A little bit about our security, so each employee wears a badge or pager, um, it goes on a belt clip, um, it's got um like a gyro sphere in there as well, so if it gets tipped over on its side for more than three seconds, it's seconded, it sends an emergency signal up to the service center in Tulsa and Dallas. The employees in there then bring up the cameras, um, immediately, they can assess the situation, um, typically it's just somebody took the badge off, set it on the counter. Um, but we always call for those, um, just in case something happens. Um, we also have three hundred and sixty degree coverage, I will show you guys kind of the overall coverage on the next slide. Um, all of our cameras are four K, so we don't have anything that's super granulated or anything like that, it's very clear, we have facial recognition that can be used, um, that police need to be able to do that. Um, no overnight truck parking, um, we do have parking stalls here uh for trucks, but we don't allow overnight parking and we're willing to put up signers um if needed behind, behind there to tell the truck drivers that, we don't fall within what's a typical truck, truck stop, um, we don't do the overnight parking, we don't have showers, we don't have laundry. We don't have like a sitting area, we have a couple tables outside for quick food, but we don't have like a dining area. Um, we also carry pretty minimal truck supplies, you know, oil, windshield wipers, stuff like that, that really quick fix stuff. Um, we establish really good relationships with our services, um, emergency service personnel, um, so if something happens, a lot of times our cameras are good enough to see what happens on the public streets, so if an accident happens or anything like that, the police officers can come in, they can get behind the check stand, get on our short computer. We'll get them on the phone with our service center, they'll walk them through all the video footage, they can do their quick research there, go on about their investigation, and then they can request that video at a later point in time. Um, we do our best to make sure that we don't hold anybody up and in doing their job, so we work with them as best as we can. Uh, as I mentioned, we have a two security locations or service center locations, one in Dallas and one in Tulsa, those are our two biggest domain areas. Um, and we also prevent loitering on our parking lots, we have good lighting around our building. Um, we we do our best and our employees are trained to work with people um and around the area to uh make sure that we don't have any loitering or anybody asking for money or anything like that at the gas pumps. Um, this image right here, this is kind of a a better view of our cameras, um, as you can see here, we have coverage pretty much all the way out to the public roadways. Um. Next, we'll cover kind of our fresh food offer, uh, so we do fresh food, we have a QT kitchen, so you can come in, you can order ready to, you can order food made to your specifications on a kiosk, uh, we also offer um breakfast, lunch and dinner on our grab and go warmer, um, so we do breakfast pizzas, um, breakfast burritos and tacos. We also do like pulled pork sandwiches, pulled chicken sandwiches, macaroni and cheese, chicken fingers, stuff like that. Um, and we also do like fresh made subs, so you can come in, you can order this on a kiosk, or you can buy the pre-made stuff that we do. Um, those are made fresh every day, so as you come in, we have new sandwiches out on a daily basis. Um, next up, uh, we'll kind of get into more specific on the store, um, kind of our overall policies and stuff like that, arc aside. Um, I know for SIO, um, important things are the environmental concerns, especially whenever it comes to a gas station, and we understand that. Um, we're part of the, we're kind of the industry standard, uh, whenever it comes to environmental concerns, we we make sure that we keep all of our equipment operational, um, almost everything is set up on a sensor, so, um, especially our our fuel tanks and our tank pits. Um, those are double walled fiberglass tanks, double walled fiberglass piping. Uh, we have sensors that are inside the um tank pit as well as inside the tanks that monitor the water levels. Um, if anything goes wrong within that system, it shuts off, shuts the fuel pumps down immediately, shuts everything down, so there's no leakage. Uh, we also have our own environmental team at QuickTrip that is a quick response. They can be out on site within two to three hours of anything that needs, um, something done like that, or facility support is a quicker reaction. Um, so that's generally within thirty minutes to an hour. Um, and sometimes it's quicker depending on the location of the store and how close they are to the, our facility support. Um, we do a lot of remediation and redevelopment uh nationwide, so we'll take old dilapidated buildings, we'll take them down, do the asbestos abatement um and kind of revamp that kind of that area. We tend to bring a lot of really good companies along with us whenever we do redevelop things, we're a good company to be around, people like to be around QuickTrips, um, whenever, as if you're gonna choose to be around the gas station, they tend to choose us. Um.
Okay.
Um, so uh, we also do a couple things, right now we're experimenting with um the EV stuff in a lot of our locations, we're running conduit to parking spaces while we wait for the EV technology to kind of get better. Um. Stage three charging stations, I know they claim to be about twenty minutes, they're really not, they're like thirty five to forty for a full charge. Um, but that's what we would be putting in as a stage three, we don't like to do anything less because the faster the charge is for us, the better it is for our customers, um. Same thing with um solar panels, uh, we're experimenting with that, a lot of it's um in Denver right now. Um, and you know, we've done a couple different things, we've done building mounted, which don't typically work well because we have equipment up top. Um, and we like to get that stuff screened off, so nobody has to look at the equipment on top of buildings. Um, we've done ground mounted equipment, I know that that becomes a concern with SIO in the tree preservation process, so what we're looking at right now is we're looking at a canopy mounted system, um, it's kind of hasn't really been done too much in our company yet, so we're, we're exploring those right now. Um, I I covered this one for our fuel system, um, so we have, like I stated, we have sensors everywhere, I think there's thirty of them within the tank system, um, that can. um that can prevent, capture whatever happens there. Um and on to the project here in SIO. So as you can see here, our site development, what we're actually under contract for parcel wise is um our tree preservation, open space area is larger than what we're actually going to be building on. Floor area comparison, so what highway commercial calls for um or highest allowed in the area is a maximum floor area coverage of thirty percent, um which equals out to almost a hundred ninety-five thousand square feet. We're nowhere close to that, um so we're at four point.
Did you say thirty percent preservation of trees in open space?
No, no, I'm talking about highway commercial for floor coverage area. Um so thirty percent is what's called for, uh you can go up to a highway commercial, we're at four point three percent. Our building's just under eighty-three hundred square feet. Um so currently, this is what um Baker Road looks like. Um and underneath that, you can see a image of QuickTrip. Uh I'll have a little bit bigger one here at the end of this as well. Um so this will touch a little bit on the septic variance um that we will be requesting as this this current uh application is rescinded and this new one is in the process of being reviewed. Um so there's currently fifteen other properties um within the area that are running on the septic system. In our discussions uh with the staff at the beginning, it's pretty impossible for us to get public uh sewer over there, we'd have to go underneath the interstate. Um it's just not, not a viable project. Uh some of the companies that we have worked with in the past and that we're exploring here uh for our septic system is Advantex and BioMicrofix. Um so we've used, we've used these types of systems in the past, they're very advanced. Um they allow for big commercial properties to be able to um have a septic field and run everything correctly. So as we do a little bit further along in this project, um we'll be able to narrow down what system's gonna work best for this, for this side. Um here's a site plan, um this will explain, kind of give a little bit more detail. As you can, on the bottom of the page, um south is the interstate. And north is uh the Heritage Woods Boulevard, that'll be coming in with Heritage Woods Project. Um we're currently working with Heritage Woods um on the Boulevard design, making sure that we get everything approved through MDOT as well. So we've already had those initial discussions and we're working with them to get this figured out as far as how this would work. So we would have eight vehicle fuelings positions or pumps, um and that allows for one person on each side. So a total of sixteen fueling positions. Um our gas pumps do not have video screens, we don't play music out of the pumps or anything like that. The only updated technology that we have really out of the pumps is we have tap to pay, um but we don't play any loud music or anything like that. Uh we also have our, have five uh high float diesel pumps um shown here. For like bigger trucks, eighteen wheelers. We don't have a fleet program, so we're not targeting the same people that like Flying J and TA are targeting. Um we're more of the in-town trucking companies, the in-town deliveries and stuff like that, that's our main diesel customer. Uh sixty-one total parking spaces um for passengers with a total of nine truck parking spaces. Um again, um no overnight parking uh for the truckers. Um here's kind of a better overall picture to kind of get the um feel of what we're looking at development wise here. Um so the crossed area um that you can see in red is kind of the maximum area that we're looking at for our septic field. We're trying to make that smaller, um as we kind of work through what systems we're gonna be working with, um we're looking to try to shrink that down. Uh this is a floor plan, um it's it's pretty basic, we've got side entry doors, um one on each side. And then we've got two front entry doors as you come into the store. Um right in front of you is a check stand, um it's kind of the U, it's the U shape there. And then directly behind that is our kitchen. Because of the way we have this store set up, you're always able to see the employees in the kitchen, um you can watch them make your food. Um so there's uh, you know, it makes everybody feel a little bit better. Moving to store design here, um so this is a basic uh store design. Um this is what we would need to do if we didn't add, this is what it'd look like if we didn't add the mechanical screening. So um typically, it's it's a metal fence that goes up around and make sure that it covers all the mechanical equipment. With solar mounted uh solar roof metal equipment, we would need to remove the the uh mechanical screening in order to make that work. Um so that's kind of what this would look like here. Uh this is our diesel canopy elevation. Um as you can see, kind of in between the two bottom pictures there, um we have our uh trash enclosure, so we've got a metal building to kind of help keep all of our um supplies and stuff in there um for uh like quickcrete, um uh oil spills, stuff like that. We get everything cleaned up pretty immediately. Um that stuff that is uh housed in that outside storage unit. And then we've got um like metal fencing, uh so it's big iron doors. Um and then we put the screen, uh black mesh screening on there. Um we can put metal doors on there, we don't recommend it uh just because it makes it super heavy, especially in the wind. Um it's hard for our employees um to kind of handle the the weight of the door if we do do metal doors. So um what we, what we've done um in the past, we've done have a double screen of mesh, um so double layers, so you can't see through it at all. Um so here is the rendering of our diesel canopies, again, our our diesel bays. Um the diesel pumps don't have music playing on them either, they're just like our front ones. Gas canopy. This is a little bit better image of our rendering of our building here. Couple of things to point out on this rendering, we do use bollards um in front of our stores instead of the curbs. Um it helps protect anybody walking, you know, past that, um past that boulder on the sidewalk. Prevents people from running into the building. Actually, a couple of weeks ago, we saw that at the Lifford Wendy's in Illinois, where they came up over the curb and ran into the building. Really good reason on why we don't, we don't do that, we we've been away from that for about twenty years now. So just to reiterate kind of what we're doing today, really wanted to get here, present QuickTrip, present the company. Um and then what we're gonna do is rescind the current zoning application uh that we have. We have the conditional rezoning application in along with the septic variants. Um so as those get reviewed by staff, be back here again. Um and uh then um after that, if everything happens to go through there, um the next steps and kind of what we would need in order to continue the project, we'd need the conditional rezone approved, the variance approved, as well as a special use permit for them. If you have any questions, I am, I'm here for you.
Alright. Yeah, this would obviously be fact, especially because they're gonna have to really submit. And I think Doug, will that also require another public hearing because it's a different application?
Uh yes, that will require a uh a whole nother situation like tonight, a new public hearing, new notification. Um yes, all that stuff.
So I do have a couple of that questions.
Sure, go ahead.
So you mentioned that um your focus is on in-town trucks, is that just related to the diesel pumps?
Yeah, yes, yes, yeah, so our our big focus is not like the um Mayflower trucks or the big giant moving companies or, you know, the really big trucking companies, that's not our, that's not our uh.
So that's, the diesel pumps are related to like in-town
Correct.
moving trucks or
Yes.
those can be pretty big too, okay. And then what are the other sixteen fuel stations for?
Uh so those are passenger vehicles, um so your normal everyday cars.
And um what are you seeking in in terms of a septic variance?
Well, so we cannot bring public sewer out over to our site because it requires, yeah. So in order for us to be able to do a san- sanitary system, we need to do septic.
Okay.
So are the soils good or are they not good and therefore you need an Advantex system? Or you you guys would just add that system in just to be better?
Yeah, so um.
Cause Michigan takes major systems.
Right, so uh what we'd be doing, we would be putting that in because um for us, we're going to try to make sure that we have long-term solutions rather than putting in something that may be a little bit smaller, a little bit cheaper. Uh we'll go ahead and do whatever is needed for the upgrade system so it'll last longer, it's better for the community.
So I have another question, um your wastewater treatment system, how do you envision that working? Where will the waste go?
Well, so with, yeah, so it would be a septic leach field. Um and then the, I'm not too familiar with how the septic systems work. I just know that we require, at this point in time, what we're looking at is a high level to acre and a half of a septic leach field.
So you're gonna have the septic system and you're gonna have a wastewater treatment system?
No, no, so it's it's either a septic field or a wastewater treatment plant.
Or, okay, okay.
Um so I know Heritage Woods is doing the wastewater treatment plant. Um we've um explored a couple of options there, we're still exploring how that would work.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't get that.
Well, Doug can tell us, but isn't an Advantex system a wastewater treatment system? I mean, I'm pretty sure it is.
Depending on.
You still have a effluent.
Yes, of course.
Depending on what, yeah, and it's depending on there are multiple grades of systems, so. And treatments.
So that's why we'll have to have a whole nother.
So I didn't see on there where you put your uh um EV stations.
Um we're gonna work that out with the staff, yeah. And wherever those kind of work out to be the best um situation and how kind of determine how many we need, that's where we'll label those on the plans.
So I read in the uh the planner memo that um part of the planned Heritage Woods entrance would be on your property, should this plan go forward. And you mentioned.
Sorry, say that again.
So I I believe I read in our planner's memo about your project um that part of the heritage, proposed Heritage Woods entrance is on your, would be on your property.
No, so we, Heritage Woods is building the Boulevard and we would, yeah. So we would be tying into their Boulevard that they're.
Oh, you would wanna use.
Yes, yeah, so we're gonna have to tie into theirs because we won't be able to get access to the MDOT right away or roadway.
And that's what you're, when you said you were working with Heritage Woods on the entrance, that's what you're talking about?
Correct.
How you would exit your.
Correct, yes, yep.
What if you're way ahead of Heritage Woods and Heritage Woods never happens?
I I believe that they're under construction or should be doing the Boulevard here pretty shortly.
And smoothed it out, so.
Question?
Yes.
This looks like this is your first location in Michigan, is that correct?
We've got a couple projects that are currently in development, but we do not have any in Michigan right now. Love for SIO to be the first one.
Where's your closest one, just?
Uh like in development?
No.
Or open. It'll be in Indiana. We've got. I will get back to you.
Somebody wanted to take a look at operation.
Yeah, um I'll uh I'll find it before the end of today's meeting.
Looks like there's one in Dale.
Daleville is open, yes, that's very recent.
Outside of Monsey.
Monsey, Michigan?
I'm using your web.
Alright, okay, with that then, um we'll just move to our planner's uh report.
Okay. Uh so how's everybody doing tonight? Yep, yeah, um for those, yeah, how's everyone doing? So my name is Doug Luan, I am a planner, for those of you who don't know, planner for Carlisle Workman Associates. And I'm subbing for Laura tonight. So yes, uh you know, we've got our review, it's I think nine or ten pages long. And this review is based on the idea that the applicant is simp, is requesting a a straight rezoning, excuse me, from uh R one to C three. So if the applicant does reapply as a conditional rezoning, then our, this review will change substantially. So I'm not sure how much you want me to get into this at this point. I will say, uh based on uh the fact that the applicant or the site in question, approximately fifteen acres, um does, is not uh served by um municipal sewer. Uh the planning commission or in the township board, as it currently stands, could not approve this project as it sits. So um they will require, uh you know, in addition to their re-submital as a conditional rezoning, uh they'll have to request a variance from the Township Zoning Board of Appeals to allow a septic system on this site instead of, um instead of a municipal, you know, system. So I guess uh Jan, if you, it depends on how far you want me to get into this, since apparently the applicants can be resubmitting, so I guess I'll ask you that.
Yeah, I think um because there there will be a resubmital, it it's a good introduction to who you are, what your company is and and so forth, and so I I think it's, it's not helpful to probably discuss things um because it is also dependent on on getting that variance. So um I think it, you know, unless.
Yeah. I do have some questions for Doug.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know.
Yeah, go ahead.
Some facts that I wanted to get. Hi Doug, good to see you.
Hey, how are you, having a good stand?
Yes, my first question is, it appears that they're saying that this is R one to C three. You know, all five properties are R one, but I'm trying to see on the zoning map what those dotted lines are that enclose, um I think it's uh five twenty-five Baker. It looks like that's C three right now. So that's my first question, is is Mr. Spicer's property on five twenty-five Baker zone C three? And and if it is, if it is, then then that just needs to be stated, instead of saying it's all, all five are R one. And and you want to all go to C three.
Alright, I will, I will look into that and try to have you an answer, it's gonna, I gotta pull up the zoning map on my end.
Right.
So keep, but keep going, what's what's your next question?
Oh, the next one was, obviously, uh there's Pilot across the street, across Baker Road, just a little to the northeast, that is zone C three and is a travel center. And I I wouldn't, I would acknowledge that a prior variance variance or uh, what do you, what would you call it when you go to the ZVA? A variance, yes, okay. Doesn't, doesn't impact a new one necessarily, but was that a variance granted for the pilot on the northeast corner there?
I, I don't believe there was a, a variance for that one. Um, that pilot has been, you know, in an exist, in existence for, in various forms for many years. Um, the, the standard that's in the zoning ordinance now that indicates C3 zoning has to be served by sewer um, very likely could predate, uh, or, you know, this project could pre- predate that, that standard. Um, I'm not, you know, this.
I just thought it might be information for the, for the applicant.
Yeah.
They wanted to look into it.
Yeah, and uh, yes, the applicant, I think, is aware of all the properties around here that are not zoned residential that are you know, that are on septic systems, so.
So, so they have, they have a. Did I ask the follow up for that first, before we move on? Um, I assume that the pilot has a drink, a septic system.
Yes, oh yeah, big, big, big septic system, yes.
Okay, big.
Yep.
Uh, that's it, that's my follow up.
Yep.
I can wait if you, if you prefer. I was just gonna ask, did I hear you say that that the pilot, that pilot station, because there's another pilot station on the other side of 94, but that pilot station on the north side of 94 may have been built prior to our language in the current C3 ordinance?
Yes.
Is that what I heard you say? Okay.
Yeah, but I, I would, when this gets to the zoning board of appeals, that's gonna be something that we'll probably do a little more specific research on. Um, I don't have the actual dates of when that language popped up in the ordinance.
That's why I was bringing it up now, Doug.
Yeah.
Is that, is that, is that information obtainable?
Well, it's the intent that's in the.
Oh, I mean, the, the reason I'm asking is because there's a reason why we created that language. It's policy. And we didn't want more. Okay, so, I mean, you bring up, I'm a good question, Commissioner Hyde, so I mean, if that's true, I mean, my, because because my interpretation of the ordinance is that we don't want that to happen. That's why we say only if you have access to sewer and sanitary. There's a reason that language is pretty specific. But anyway, I'll wait to hear from your office.
Yeah, and just a reminder that goes to the Board of Appeal, uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals. We will have the conditional use portion of, of.
Yeah, so, but you know, I don't even know how the zoning board of appeals can override a policy of the township.
It's, it's.
That's what it exists.
That's what it exists for.
Yeah, that's the sole reason to be.
Well, that would be, so if we created language in our PUD, which we have talked about, and, and I believe we have consensus on it, to not have PUDs off of Jackson Road, somebody could go to the zoning board of appeals and say, can I get a variance on that language and build a PUD off here? I mean, what's the point of creating policy? Do you, let me just finish. What's the point of creating policy?
It, it's.
That can be varied.
You're, you're required to have an appeals process for any um ordinance or law. It, it's just the way our democracy works. Um, but anyway, Doug, why don't, why don't you just, maybe you can add on to um, the role of, you know, the role of the ZVA versus planning commission and, and Board of Trustees.
Yeah, well, well, like you mentioned, Jan, that, that there has to be an internal safety valve with the zoning ordinance and that, that safety valve is the zoning board of appeals and once that local, you know, can, it's called a local remedy, uh, once that local remedy is exhausted, let's say the zoning board of appeals uh, did not want to grant this variance, um, then the applicant would, you know, in theory could then go up a level and that would be to uh court. Um, but before you go to court, you've got to have a local remedy to ask for a variance from pretty much any part of the zoning ordinance. So um, yes, in theory, someone could ask the zoning board of appeals to waive a, any requirement in the zoning ordinance or, or vary that. Now, they, the zoning board of appeals has, has relatively strict language that they have to follow and uh, to, to grant a variant, to grant any, any variance. And, you know, in my working with the ZBA over the last couple of years, actually many years, but more closely the last couple of years. Um, I, I think they are, 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 they really follow those, that language very carefully. Um, so I, I, I think they're doing their job. So it, it's not as if you can just go to the ZBA and get any variance granted. I mean, the, the ZBA has been doing a very good job of looking at all of the specific criteria that have to be met to get a variance. So um, uh, I don't know if that helps, um, uh, you know, helps your, your, your thoughts on that, but that's, that's my impression of, of, you know, of the current ZBA.
Um, I'm aware, I'm aware of that. I understand those parameters that they, they're limited by the parameters that they consider in terms of making a determination. I do have a couple of questions. I don't know if it's appropriate. Do you want me to wait till we rehear this matter?
Yeah, I, I think because it, when they come before the, with a conditional use, there are gonna be parameters around the use.
So this is, this is more in talking about the master plan, the interpretation is reviewed in this memo, how the planner has interpreted the master plan.
Okay, go ahead.
That's a little different, but I.
Yeah, it is. No, that's, I think that's, that's a, a problem.
So um, on page two, um, you go into the factors, the rezoning factors. And number one, um, in the findings of fact, you make this, I, I know that this was written by your partner, so when I say you, don't take it personally, Doug. But it's written in, in recognition with the change in conditions, the township future land use plan identifies the subject site as mixed use highway commercial. Now I looked in the planning, the master plan, and all these things, you know, the future land use are handled. And um, they explain medium, high density, et cetera, commercial land use. And they talk about commit composite land use, and it also talks about mixed use highway commercial land use, which is what I think is applicable to this project. Is that correct, Doug?
Yes.
Okay, and um, there's a description about how, you know, it describes the intent, description, relationship to natural features, appropriate uses, blah, 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 blah. Um, but in this section on page forty six, for those of you who are looking at the master plan, it does not say Baker Road at Jackson is what we should be having more development of mixed use highway, I'm sorry, mixed use highway commercial. Would you agree with that?
Um, well, I, I would look at the future land use map.
Right.
That's on, actually, I've got it open on my, it's on page thirty one. Because you have to use the map in association with the text and the, the future land use map does clearly show that those five properties as mixed use highway commercial.
Or rusty red colored blobs there around the interstate.
Well, I'm trying to track from Z, oh, Marshall Road. And, but I don't, okay, here's Baker. And that's what you're referring to, these two rusty colors?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the four that actually surround the interchange.
And then the two south of the ninety four.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Um, and I think those track for a couple of different master plans too. I'm not sure when they first were. Um, but it, it's, it hasn't been changed recently at all.
Okay. Um. On page, the next page, um, it's the continuation of number three from page two. You find that the township sanitary sewer service area is not currently planned for the township of the government agencies to provide sewer service to the site. And that's what you're referring to in C, our C3 ordinance language.
Yes, yeah, and, and this current township sewer service map, I guess I was referring to as well.
Okay, and if, is it, in terms of steps, we're here for a public hearing on the rezone. I realize you're gonna change your petition, but would we rezone before a variance is granted?
Um, that's a good question. Um, you could rezone contingent on the zoning board of appeals making their decision. Or you could just postpone action until the zoning board of appeals came to a decision. So it could, it could go either, you know, it could go either way.
Yeah, because I was wondering why this project was brought before us prematurely, what I would consider prematurely. And I, I've been corrected many times throughout my tenure as a commissioner that we can approve these things pending some other outcome, but it feels, um, as you probably remember, Doug, that I'm uncomfortable with that approach. But, um, okay, and then of course, um. This uh, other finding of fact, under number four, uh, the memo says that the C3 highway commercial zoning designation allows through permitted and conditional uses, a number of land uses that could have negative impact on the condition and or value of the property in the vicinity of the site. What do you mean by that? Or what is meant by that, Doug?
Um, a couple, a couple of things. Uh, right now, as planned, the applicant's request for a C3 zoning would be the whole site. And so that would, that would go all the way to the full western property line as, as this project has been presented to the township this evening. So that would allow, uh, and so you see in my report, a couple of times, we say that we have to consider that C3 uses will go all the way to their western property line of the site, thus butting up against the Heritage Woods project, which is a, you know, fifty five and over plus senior, you know, assisted living. And some of the uses that uh, are permitted within the C3 zone, if they were that, if, if encompassed the whole property, which again, we have to assume it will, uh, could have negative impacts. And, and the one, you know, that they're requesting, although it's a uh, kind of a modified request is that of a truck stop. So C3 zoning is our only zoning district that allows a truck stop. So as requested, the entire fifteen acre parcel could be, you know, the applicant could get their rezoning, and this is why, um, this is why they're, why they are requesting, they will be requesting a different kind of rezoning called a conditional rezoning. Because we, once it's zoned to C3 highway commercial, they could take that plan away. We're, we, we can't require them to, to build what they're showing us. Uh, we can require them to build what they're showing us if they do it as a conditional rezoning. So my concern was, okay, they applied for a straight C3 highway commercial zoning. And if this whole thing is built from east to west, north to south, as say, a truck stop, that could have significant impact on the folks who will ultimately be living uh, and others, you know, up and down Baker Road, uh, for having, you know, another truck stop. So that's, the, and there are some other uses on the list and the C3 list that if used for the entire uh length of the property could have some impacts on, um, you know, on the people who live, not only the future residents of Heritage Woods, but also those people that live up and down, um, Baker. So it's a long, long answer to your question, but that's what, that's what I was thinking. And so now the applicant is kind of pulling back. They're saying, we're not gonna do a straight rezoning. We're gonna do a conditional rezoning. And what a conditional rezoning is, is that if the planning commission and ultimately the township board agreed um, with the conditional rezoning, the applicant may place conditions upon themselves. For example, you might remember seeing in the applicant's presentation, they showed about the western two thirds of the property being an open space.
Reserved.
Preserved, yeah. So if, if that is one of their conditions, they may, we can't through a rezoning, place that condition on them. But they may, through conditional rezoning, in the, a quirk of the planning and zoning enabling legislation, the applicant has to volunteer these conditions, but if they were to volunteer the condition that the western two thirds of that property would be um preserved, then it's preserved. And that's now part of the zoning and it may not be changed unless the rezoning, unless they uh, rezone the property again. So I think that, now, I don't know, but I think that's, that's probably what the applicant is, is now. You know, they got our review, they saw what's, maybe what was, maybe the writing on the wall and um, they're requesting to come in with a little more muted of a request, if that's, uh, if I can use that word, so. Uh, sorry, long answer, but that's, that's what, that's what I was thinking.
That's what I thought, and I just wanted that to be in the public record. So that's why I asked the question. Um. You, this memo, um, ends um, on page seven at the bottom, summary of findings of fact and recommendation. We do not recommend the approval of the rezone. Due to the lack of public sanitary sewer, this request can only move forward subject to a variance, da, 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 da. The following findings of fact, et cetera. So as the project stands before us tonight, you still, uh, as I'm reading this memo, that it is not recommended by our planner that we approve this, particularly in light of what you, what you point out in your, in your, um, in your, uh, uh, in your memo. Um, and then, of course, your memo also above that on page seven, it starts on page six. You, at the bottom of page six, you go through this, um, ITE trip generation rates and show how much, um, because I don't have any faith in traffic studies. I've seen these trip, I mean, I was watching the Board of Trustees deal with the Heritage Woods uh, uh, project in which they said, oh, no, it's no problem, tra- traffic won't be a problem, the study said, and Commissioner, um, oh jeez, who was I forgetting, right?
Palmer.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Palmer pointed out that she uses that road, which I use that road, capable of. And I know that, um, there's a lot of traffic, but anyway, you, in this memo, develop a, a traffic analysis about if the if the, assuming that, you know, they're based upon this ITE trip generation rates system, I guess, I don't know what to call it, but um, that there would be more traffic, I think. You see, if, if the homes were built back there, there'd be a hundred and fourteen point twenty four trip per day as opposed to if this project were built on the same land, there'd be three thousand two hundred and fifty six trips per day that would be generated. Would you say that in your, in looking at this project, in this various, but I mean, now we're gonna have a, a different, um, septic situation, but, um, did that lead to some concern about approval of this project?
The trips?
The trips, the amount of trips that would be brought about by this type of development on Baker Road.
Um, yeah, yeah, it, it, it does, and, and it, I'm, perhaps got a little ahead of myself with this analysis because it's not under site plan review right now. It is, it is just the rezoning. Um, but, uh, you know, this is one of the items we're supposed to be looking at is potential impacts. So um, I wanted to point out but, you know, the potential impacts. These are taken strict, you know, straight from Institute for Transportation Engineering. Uh, S, S, you know, estimates, they, they have, they come out with um, estimates every. S S, you know, estimates, they, they have, they come out with um, estimates every four or five years. Uh, they are very large volumes, uh, books that we have in our office that um, these are taken from. So, uh, yeah, there, this, this was raised as an issue. Uh, for the planning commission and for the applicant, that while this is a rezoning and. The township master plan may indicate that this is supposed to be highway commercial at some point in the future. Um, traffic, you know, is still a concern and increase in traffic is a concern. Um, and if I remember correctly. You know, the traffic from the Heritage Wood Woods project was also a concern, so, you know, and and. In the mixing of, you know, a guest, you know, service station with trucks with the Heritage Woods traffic. Um, you know, is a concern, but that's, you know, again, I'm getting slightly ahead of. Myself here uh, in the review, because this is not a site plan review, but it is, it is something I think we should have. You know, a thirty thousand foot view uh, kind of understanding of, and that's really why I provided that information.
Thank you, Doug. Yeah, we appreciate that.
Just briefly, uh, so Doug, you're bringing it up so that the additional uh. Rezoning application will take that kind of thing into account, so that they know that this is. A potential issue for us.
Well, at the, yeah, at the time we wrote this review, we didn't know that they were going to switch this to a. To a conditional, to a conditional rezoning request, but now, but yes, now that we know that. If I was the applicant, I think I would use this, you know, in their resubmital.
Yep, question, yes.
I just want to mention that the property. Owned by Ruth Johnson came before the planning commission last year for uh, request rezoning to C three. And what we learned from that is there was a cooperative agreement between. This parcel owner and Heritage Woods where they put in easement. We saw that on the, um, yes, site plan. Um, so my hypothetical question is. If there's been any discussions with Heritage Woods about tapping into their. Waste system in a cooperative arrangement.
Yes, yes, there has. Um, so there's. We have a very high volume, so what we have to do um, is. Our teams have to work together. They've got their standard of what they're building for, that's going to be needed for their development. We have to evaluate what additional stuff we're going to have to add on to it, or. If we're going to have to build an additional system next to it and connect the two systems, which I think is what. Was kind of determined long term, if if we were to go that route is. We'd need to purchase an acre and a half next to where their system is getting set up in order to do. A full wastewater treatment plant. Um, so we're still exploring that. We're trying to figure out what's going to be the best option for us as well as for Heritage Woods, because we don't want to mess up their project.
The township.
And the township, yeah.
Um, so one other question, I had written this down before. I heard what I, I'm not sure there's an answer. Would you consider putting the western portion under conservation? Is that what you're intending to put that land under conservation easement? To say it's preserved has one meaning.
Yeah, uh, and you know, that's something that we will continue to work with staff and. The council on and and just making sure that we can fit what's really needed um, for the township. Um, we're, we're willing to bend and willing to, you know, change how we we do things so that we can. Make a viable project that's good for everybody. We definitely don't want to be the uh, the one.
Thank you.
You have a question? Doug, is there a history of um, sharing of septic like this? Clean parcels in Washington County? I, I'm like racking my brain and can't really think of any right now.
She has a septic or wastewater treatment, the waste wastewater treatment.
I, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't, uh, I don't know either, in that, 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 I, I. But I wouldn't know, you know, that's not something that I'm terribly in involved with. Uh, O H M may have a better feeling about that. Um, I don't know if Stacy's on the line or not. But uh, if if that has occurred before, but um, I, I believe if they were to. If they were to be able to connect with the Heritage Wood system, you know, that would have to come under additional. Obviously, some additional review um, at, on, on the part of not only the township, but likely the county or the state.
Of course, yeah, I just, I, I just.
Well, Lethal Pine has it, but it's a whole treatment plant.
Yeah, but that's.
And that's for many parcels.
Yeah, and that's, that's Lethal Pine.
Yeah.
That's theirs. This is two different entities.
Have to be managed by one company.
I just don't. Stocking oil, stocking different substances too.
Well, not, it's not, I have oil in a septic. They're going to make sure that's not in there.
Yeah, but, but if I could, if I could add one thing, I am aware of a very similar situation. Up in a township in northern Oakland County that um, I represented for a number of years called Springfield Township. And there is a development at the corner of Dixie Highway and Davisburg Road. That has a Krogers and a number of other retail businesses that all share a um. Uh, uh, an onsite wastewater system that would be similar in one sense to this. So. Could it happen? Yes, it certainly could happen.
All right. All right, um, did, uh, does O H M have anything to add? I think. She's not on, oh, she's not, okay. All right, no, they don't. I think there, there was some repetition between that.
Do we put this, do we table this?
We don't.
They're withdrawing, right?
Yes, I would move to table.
Well, no, they're withdrawing. This is just the public hearing. We're not taking any action at this point.
Okay.
Um, I just, I think um, just from the comments of the planning commission, I think there is. Um, there would be um, support for you going to the um, zoning board of appeals first. Um, before coming back, um, so that, you know, that. You know, it, because just the, the amount of time the, you know, the um, uh. And notification and all of these things, when really that's a clearly the most important, most important stuff. But we appreciate you coming and introducing it. Um, I also, I think. Um, folks should understand that we will be reviewing our um, uh, master plan. Um, it's up for review uh, next year and in. Um, this is my opinion, this is not the opinion of of planning commission is that with Heritage Woods going in. Um, the idea of commercial being um, connected to and a part of that neighborhood. Is, is something to be considered now that we have people living there. Um, and, and so uh, perhaps the master plan because of what is happening with Heritage Woods. Um, there might be some consideration of uh, future land use. Um, so that there's more of a relationship developed between Heritage Woods and what fronts on Baker Road.
So what does that mean? I'm not sure understood.
Well, what that means is maybe C three on that side of Baker Road isn't the most, it um. Okay, it, it, because it, because it only has a relationship to the highway. As opposed to a relationship to all the people that are going to live there. Yeah.
And I, if I may, Ben Chair, I, I don't want to, that's not the only issue that I have. The variance first and then coming to us. I did not vote for the Heritage Woods project because I felt it was too big. Now we're talking about putting something like a truck stop. Uh, and despite they don't spend the night and despite they don't, they're smaller trucks. I still don't like the concept in that area and the traffic. I live off of Baker Road and I still have a hard time around three thirty. Making a left turn off of Marshall Road, so. Uh, I didn't believe it was going to be less traffic from Heritage, but we haven't got it going yet. I mean, they're just not clearing out, putting the entrance in, but. I just wanted you to know, I have a major, major concern about that project going into that location. Despite and considering we have three truck stops right there.
I understand your concern. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, and we'll uh, now open up for our public comment. Andrew, um, is there anyone present that would like to uh, address the planning commission about?
So what?
Dave Spicer, five two five Baker Road. As you all know, I'm on the end over there. And uh, as we know here, this planning commission, I don't know if the members out, but we, these two young ladies over here were on there at the time, but. It was said that you would like to see the three pieces of property there, whatever, all come together. And and you people had even said, I believe, that you'd be in favor of doing that. Now we're getting to point out, or it doesn't sound like some of you in favor of doing it, but I'd like to see it changed to from R one to C three. And also, there's comments from Luon there that says, oh, the people in Heritage Woods, whatever, they got, they might have, you know, a lot of traffic behind it there. Well, guess what happened? What do you think Eugene, Cat, and I have? What are we going to have? The same thing, but this board said yes and passed it on to the trustees. Okay, that's all I'm trying to say, so gotta realize Eugene and I lived there when the first truck stop came in. We lived there when the second truck came in. We lived there when the third truck stop came in. No one cared about us, but now everybody seems to care now. Thank you.
So for me, sir.
I know, I remember pretty well.
You're behind this too, aren't you? I mean, you'd like to see this.
Oh, yeah.
Kathy Spicer, I'm Dave White.
Kathy, hi.
I just see a five to five Baker Road, do I just sign in?
Uh, yeah, everyone who speaks should sign in, but.
Also, I don't.
Do whatever. I just want, need to support him and everybody to remember and realize. We have been pushed against a wall, I ninety four, our property. And nowhere to go, don't know how we can live in the future, what we need to do, so I hope we can just keep working with you guys. We got to figure something out. Something has to work someday, sometime. We can't just keep being there like that. And again, like you said, you know, we kind of. Were worried what Heritage Woods, the Boulevard is, what's cramming us in. Fine, you know, farmland is going to develop. Okay, it's at the end of our woods, but we just, what can we do? And we need help. And we hope the township, which we have lived in for fifty some years. Can see all this and help guide and really look at what um, we can do here with all this. Okay, thanks. I certainly speak for myself. I appreciate that situation you find yourself in.
Good evening, my name is Eugene. I have seen all of you here before.
What's your last name, sir?
Uh, Cat, K E T T. I'm one of the property owners. Um, and to answer a couple of questions, I was at the meeting when Ms. Palmer. Uh, the trustee mentioned that um, she doesn't go down Baker Road anymore because it was uh. Got too congested. I can appreciate that. I have to deal with it on a daily basis. Uh, I also recall at the. The uh, final approval, she mentioned, she was very informed because now she can go see her, all her girlfriends are going to live back there. And just, it went from one extreme to the other, and the table took in. Uh, was in Madison, Wisconsin last weekend. I toured a couple of uh, Quick Trip petroleum outlets. And they are first class compared to the other three truck stops that are there. I would say uh, those would be characteristic of truck stops. Um, and this is a whole, whole different ballgame. I highly recommend you guys go take a look at that or, you know, see one in action. It's a. It would be very convenient for the people living in Heritage Woods. There's a small grocery store there with all kinds, you know, kind of the, the best type of food. Priced cheaper than mine. I, when I heard about. Pardon me?
Where was that?
At a Quick Trip in Madison, Wisconsin.
Oh, Madison, Wisconsin.
Yes, way, way over there. Kid lives there, had to go work on his car. Again, for the record, I'm certainly in favor of this, obviously. I kind of didn't want to get up here and introduce myself with just that, but I. I had toured, took the time to look at those and uh, first class operation compared to what's there now. Thank you.
So you all feel very trapped by Heritage Woods and, and the small size of your properties and. Your abilities to do something to unload your property and move on is how true or basically saying here or.
Well, it's fifteen acres is a pretty good sized chunk. It's a, it's a wonderful uh, piece of property in a terrible location.
Right, there you go. Well, it's just become commercial. It's become commercialized.
Well, right, um, the other thing I want to mention is uh, me and Mr. Luon, uh, back in the late nineties, early two thousands, changed the master use plan. We worked. Uh, there was many, many meetings at the new uh, Dexter High School and um, we had a change from I one to C three. So I was kind of curious when the by, we, you mentioned the bylaws changing on uh, not allowing C three to do anything without.
The ordinance.
With the, with the ordinance app. So I'm curious how the ordinance stacked up when that came into play.
Me too. That's why we're going to get some work.
Comparison to when it was rezoned to C three. This is something I.
Yeah, and we can add that to the list.
On the list, I guess, very curious.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else?
I'm Gary Smith. Three houses, and I think I support this because I think. It's uh, residential is getting, it's just too busy for the residential there. I think it's kind of, it's changed over there. Sounds like this is a nice clean operation to move in there if you can control them and keep the. Woods fine and make that conservation or something like that. That'd be a nice, nice project. It could fit in with the area. But I own three homes with my fam, my family and uh, I would support this very much. Thank you.
I'm Dan Johnson. I'm here tonight representing the Ruth Johnson Estate, which is one of the parcel owners in the property that we're talking about. So I want to make two points. Number one, um, the background of this property is rather checkered in terms of. The eminent domain actions that occurred, whether it's on I ninety four to the south or the widening of Baker Road east. As a result, you know, you have the case of the Ruth Johnson Estate property is really landlocked, so they've been. Landlocked since the fifties or sixties and paying property taxes on it, probably they can't really get to. So that's number one, and there are similar issues on the Baker roadside where M dot widened right away and Eugene. And David and Cat been living with this kind of funky surface road. The county doesn't want to maintain it anyway, so it's fallen upon them to deal with the maintenance. Um, so that's number one. Number two, in terms of the Quick Trip proposal. Uh, the state has looked at the, has researched the, the history of Quick Trip prior to the, prior to the presentation tonight. And they're very uh, impressed with the long history and operating ethos of the company. Uh, you, Skyler mentioned the financial stability, the community engagement programs, the, with the local nonprofits, the. Generous benefit and react, retention programs for the employees and progressive environmental policies, so. I think in summary, if you consider the merits of the Quick Trip proposal in the coming weeks, please consider the history of the property. Impact on the current property owners and opportunity for the township to improve. You know, the future and, and add equality organization with the family companies located in that township. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
This is a sign in.
Okay.
Sign out right now.
Is there anyone else present that would like to um?
Are we able to say a second thing?
Um, if you have something to add, uh, that, that's, go ahead.
Hasn't been said. It particularly hasn't. As far as Quick Trip goes and what they do with the community. I watched Tigers baseball this year. All of a sudden, they're playing against Kansas City Royals. Here's Quick Trip on the jerseys. The banner is in the stadium. I'm like, what's this? I called all my friends in Sia and made Dexter. Everyone's all excited because they know our situation. Read about it, see what they're doing. They have a partnership with Kansas. And the community right now that they've done, and it's really is pretty cool.
And go Tigers.
Sounds like they're a, a, a good corporate community person. That's not the issue that we're going to be resolving, but I get it.
Okay, anyone else present? Then we'll move online.
Move to. Pam Boyd.
Hi, Pam.
I think Pam Boyd is Sia resident. A couple of points, um, the Quick Trip presentation. One of the things. Um, the Quick Trip presentation, one of the things that uh he kept repeating was that he is working with the people in Heritage Woods. You know, there's been a lot of water that's gone under the bridge here about Heritage Woods over the last couple of years. The fact that this young man and his company is working with Heritage Woods is a huge bonus. Um, I, I think that that needs to be um remembered. Um, so this, this discussion kinda reminds me of the discussion two years ago about drive-throughs at restaurants on Jackson Boulevard. Jackson Boulevard is a boulevard for cars. And drive-throughs are important. And you know, this was a discussion that the planning commission dealt with. Well, one of the things about um Syo Township is it straddles two highway entrances. So a lot, excuse me, a lot of businesses uh depend on the highway travel. And right there at the corner of the highway is a prime location for a highway centered business. Now, what these guys are doing is they're really saying we're going to focus mostly on residents and, and cars, which I think is, is a bonus. Um, but when you have a highway entrance, um, you really need to think highway. And yes, the township is always changing and it's growing and we're gonna have more traffic. We need to learn to deal with it. Um, the last thing that I think is kind of interesting is, you know, uh, at least the, the businesses, the one business on the south side of uh ninety-four is looking a little a, a little old. And if these guys come in with their uniforms and their polished um exterior and interior, what do you think might happen to the other businesses on the other corners? Do you think that they might up their game on looking a little bit nicer? I would certainly think that that could be a possibility. Then those are my comments. I I'm for Quick Trip. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Pattinson.
Hello, Rob.
Hi, Dan. Rob Pattinson, Syo Township resident. I helped a friend start a business in Georgia and I lived there for two years. And Quick Trip was actually our um contract for fueling a, a fleet of vehicles. And they, I will say, their, their um facilities were always very clean and attractive. And they have the best coffee of, of all the uh, that sort of um type of coffee. And uh this is the corner of uh Baker Road and ninety-four. And I think we can all agree that the most appropriate use of the land around the Baker Road ninety-four exits is for stuff associated with the highway. I think it is much less appropriate for the area to be used for residential, such as Heritage Woods. I was right there with you, Kim, when you talked about opposing Heritage Woods. I opposed it too. And I'll also remind the board, you all know this, but there was a lot of heartache that the Spicer and Cat families went through with the Heritage Woods um project. And it seems to me that this is the most appropriate use of that particular slice of land. And I hope that uh the commission and the board of trustees approves this. Um, and I'm very impressed with uh, with Quick Trip. I think there will be a benefit to Syo Township. Well done.
Thank you, Rob. No others. Move to closed public time. Move back. Support, no more. Supported by Commissioner Hyde. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Um, the public, uh, hearing is closed at eight thirty-four. Then we'll move on to our second public hearing.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, and that is uh the PSP number twenty-five zero zero eight, Syo, I said, fire station, new building.
I'll leave because he don't want.
That's all right.
Oh, here, sir. Beat him gently, please.
Support you have. Thank you. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thanks, Rob.
Do you need to move to open or no?
Um, no, we'll, we'll just open it at uh eight thirty-five and then we'll hear from the applicant and get your name.
Perfect. So uh for those, those of you who don't know me, my name's Andy Hood. I'm your Syo Township Fire Chief. A little background on myself. I worked most of my career in Macomb County. Um, uh, twenty-four years there. About five years ago, I had the opportunity to come work here for Syo. And you all actually remember the day I started, even though you don't know it. I, I came to work on a Monday and United States closed down due to COVID that Friday. So that uh kinda started an interesting career here, but uh uh, so far it's been a great, uh, great career. A little bit about the fire department. Uh, the fire department was founded in nineteen eighty-six. Uh, prior to that, the community was served by the Dexter Area Fire Department. Uh, the community at the time determined that uh since Syo was had probably fifty percent of the population of the Dexter Area Fire Department, fifty percent of the call volume, but rather than contract to Dexter and not have the representation uh that would come with the, with that equivalent weight of population, they decided to start their own fire department. Uh, that, that department uh built a fire station, hired a fire chief, and created a volunteer fire department in, in the mid-eighties. Uh, and that all happened right here, uh, just north of you on Z Road. Uh, I wasn't around in this area at that time. Uh, many of you probably were. Um, and I think uh some of the stuff this commission's seen over the years, commissioners have seen over the years, uh, such as Jackson Road going from two lanes to a boulevard, uh, all this residential development. You're talking about Heritage Woods. Um, and I, you know, as your fire chief, I see everything coming into the community. Uh, and it's growing. Uh, after your first fire chief uh retired, uh Chief Furch took over. Uh, and in the, in the uh late late twenty-tens or so, uh, he developed a strategic plan for the department. Uh, he at that time identified uh that the population growth and call volume um necessitated a second fire station. And he had uh secured property uh on the southeast side of Syo, actually on Wagner Road uh near Liberty. Uh, for that purpose, it was given to him by a developer. Uh, it was kind of that piece that's um uh in that triangle that you have a, an approved development uh going in. Um, and turns out that wasn't quite big enough. Um, I came in, um, no action was taken there, but it turns out that property wasn't big enough either. I, I came in and did an assessment and found the same things. Um, about forty percent of our call volume could be better served uh with, with a station in the southeast area of the township. We have a lot of development down there and a higher call volume as well as uh redundancy for uh when the Z Road station's out. Uh, that being said, at a certain time in the last five years, uh Syo had the privilege of being able to protect, to purchase and protect a large farm all along Wagner. And right now, Mr. Vester owns that. Uh, and he farms it. In fact, is farming the uh section of the fire stations uh proposed to be built on. Uh, during that process, we were able to secure for the township a piece of property for two pur, two purposes really. One for a fire station. Uh, it met the needs and was really uh one of the only pieces of property we could find there. And secondly, uh, water studies show that at some time in the future, the water system may need uh, uh more capacity. And that's at a high point uh in the water line so that uh they could, uh, when that time comes, uh, put a, put a water facility there to help uh store capacity for the system. So that being said, uh currently the property is owned A one agricultural. Uh, and I'm here before you today to ask for a conditional use, uh, to use that uh for a fire station. And I think uh for the most part, everybody can envision what a fire station uh would be for the community. Uh, we would staff uh emergency vehicles and staff respond to emergency calls. Uh, it's the easy part. I, I, I think that part's pretty, pretty self-explanatory. Um, I, I know this commission, I know the township board, I know their climate goals, so I thought I'd jump right into some of the sustainability features we want to incorporate in the building. Uh, first and foremost, um, uh primarily all electric. Uh, we have one minor issue uh that we can't fully develop as electric, all two really. Uh, one, backup power, the facility needs to run twenty-four seven, so we would need a uh a gas operator generator to make sure it's got power. And secondly, um, we're putting in, uh, we're planning to put in a geothermal to power the entire building, heat and cool. Uh, we have some concerns that the apparatus bay uh might not be able to recover quick enough with the geothermal system. Uh, so we do have to put small supplemental gas uh for that apparatus bay for those times uh when you've got like a, a zero degree, sub-zero day and we take a sixty thousand pound piece of equipment out, park it outside uh to do work for forty-five minutes, that comes back in at zero degrees. So we do have some gas there. Uh, other than that, uh primarily, we're gonna uh heat and cool the building with geothermal, uh electric hot water. Uh, to help offset that, um, we're planning for a solar array. We think we can get the majority of the solar on the roof of the building uh that uh to offset about one hundred percent of the cost of the, one hundred percent of the facility's needs. Uh, we are looking at, uh, and I don't know if we can get it in now or it might be a future addition, uh, some batteries to help store that power so we can run it at night. Uh, that's uh something we're discussing right now. Uh, we stole a piece of the project from Ann Arbor City. Uh, in your HVAC systems, you always have to have makeup air coming into the building so the buildings stay fresh. Uh, we're looking at uh putting some transpire panels on the outside of the building. No need to look it up, uh, but basically you're gonna take a couple of strips of the building uh vertically and uh use those to preheat deer coming in. They're basically a dark cavity that in the winter might heat up, say that, you know, twenty-five degree outside air to forty or forty-five before it dumps it in. Let's help, help with the geothermal keep up. Um, solar, uh, we are, we have discussed how we're going to electrify our fleet. Uh, currently, uh, we're gonna have uh preparations made for when we change all our staff vehicles over to EVs. Uh, we're gonna have the infrastructure in place to, to prepare to, prepare to charge those. Uh, we're gonna have publicly available onsite uh EV charging stations. So, so anyone who wants to pop in and top off is able to do so. Uh, the, the bigger picture, the bigger problem we're gonna have is when we get to electric fire engines, uh, they're there, they're available. Uh, but the infrastructure needed is significant. So when we do get to the point we need to buy an electric uh fire engine for the building, uh, we would actually run another service directly and just for that purpose. Uh, so that's been considered as well. Um, uh, for the site plan, we're not really talking about the site plan today, but uh, and I, I apologize, I'm a fire chief. I, I'm, I'm gonna mess up retention, detention. Uh, we're putting a pond in the back that's going to hold water and infiltrate it into the ground. So whichever you call it, that's what we're putting in. Uh, a ton of uh, uh, green space, a ton of uh
Ton.
A ton.
In my nose.
And believe me, I, I've seen the site plan. It's going to be significant. Um, so we're gonna have, you know, rain gardens to help uh filter everything that comes off the facility, a large retention, detention basin to hold that water and it's going to be big. Uh, another thing we thought uh that we're working into the plan, uh, we have uh roof drains that are gonna run off. And part of our part of our landscape that, that the planning commission is gonna see and approve, um, we're gonna need to make sure stays green and stays nice. So what our plan now is, is we're gonna grab all that uh water that comes off the, off the roof, store it in rain barrels and use that as irrigation for landscaping. Uh, so it could be in some ways passive, um, so that we're able to maintain the, the greenscape that we put in uh with virtually no electricity. I'm sure there'll be points in time we'll have to water, but we can greatly reduce that uh with, with some, with some water capture uh type uh considerations there. Uh, that being said, that's uh really all the comments I have, and I'd love to hear uh any comments, questions, or concerns that the commission have.
Thanks. And I'll just remind everyone that it's a conditional use tonight, so we'll get the whole like kind of uh
I have a fact question.
Yes.
How many acres?
Uh, the total site is nine acres. And we're looking at using um just about five right now. Uh, the remaining four, we would uh lease back to Mr. Vester for his farm operation.
So you So I, I, you know, I've never really understood this um chief. So I, Mr., so the, the nine acres covers the part that Wester, Vestergaard is using.
Uh, correct. So when, when the township uh purchased the property, uh, they cut out this nine acre section. And Mr. Vester bought the remainder of the property. Uh, but along with that, we allowed him to use our section of the property. So our, ours is the northernmost border. Uh, the border is the uh, the, the, uh, the approved apartment complex, uh crossroads. Yeah, thank you. Uh, but we, we border there and have a border on Wagner Road.
So we still own the nine acres?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, Syo Township owns the nine acres.
Okay.
Any more questions tonight? Yes.
Uh, you answered one of them, and that was about the water storage. That's in the future. Right? The water storage?
Uh, no, it was discussed earlier, or is that gonna be? What were utilities? Yeah, that's for some time in the future. If the, if
You discussed it earlier.
Yeah, if, if the, when the township, if and when the township determines that they need the additional storage capacity, uh, they have a very quick connect directly to a water main on Liberty Road.
So that wouldn't require you to have more?
Questions of facts right now. We won't get into this.
Uh, so
I would, I wrote a note from what I heard from you. Sometimes I don't write as fast as I hear. But I heard you say that at some point you may need more water capacity.
Yeah, that would be for the township's water uh utility. So the water system in the community could need more capacity.
Oh, not your operation in that location we'd need. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Looking at the future. So there were two uh needs that the township identified with, I support this property. Any other uh questions of fact? Chief Hood. Well, go ahead on to uh Carlisle Warpin's report.
Okay. So the uh, the applicant is requesting, as you mentioned, a conditional use. Um, governmental buildings are uh, a, a use that's permitted after, you know, approval by the planning commission and township board as a conditional use. Uh, it's, it's not a use permitted by rights, not like a home or a farm in the egg zone. It's, it's uh something else. It's something that requires the planning commission and township board to give a little more careful review of to make sure that the impacts of uh, uh conditional use or sometimes called special land use uh are, are in keeping with the area and don't cause um unneeded impacts on the both township, the property, and the neighbors. So this part of our review um is, is the conditional review, review part, as was kind of alluded to. There is a site plan, uh detailed site plan that will come next that we talk about things, you know, detailed discussion of things like um, you know, landscaping and lighting and uh screening of uh, you know, uh, uh HVAC equipment and things like that. But this, this part of the review, we're looking strictly at the use. We did provide a review to the planning commission dated July fourteenth. The um I will say that um the review of this project as a public hearing as a site plan um is something that the township has elected to do. Uh, township, cities, and villages uh have exemption from their own zoning ordinance. Uh, and they, in theory, could build um the township hall, for example, or a fire station, or those kinds of facilities without having to go through full-blown site plan and special land use review. Uh, but it's my understanding that the township has, you know, voluntarily gone through this uh process. So just wanted to let folks that might be listening um or reading the minutes at some point uh to know uh that, that's how, how this uh came about. Um, as you see from our review, um, we don't have a lot of uh concerns with regard to the neighboring zoning and land use. As you see from the aerial photograph, this area uh to the south and to the west is open. Uh, to the east is asphalt plant to Uh, to the east is asphalt plant across Wagner Road, and to the north is the future Crossroads multi-family development that has not, uh, it's not been constructed yet. The master plan calls for this property to be low-density residential, which equates to our R-one zoning district. So the, the, the zoning district that could be requested here would be R-one. Um, however, uh, even with the R-one zoning, that's, uh, you know, public buildings or township governmental buildings are special land use in that district as well, so uh, we don't have any issues with the master plan uh, or natural resources on the site, if you're driven by the site or uh looked at, looked at an aerial photograph, you can see that it's uh an open field at this point. Um, there should be very few negative uh environmental impacts uh for this project to move forward. Uh, with regard to traffic, um, uh, traffic and circulation. The ultimate driveway location will have to be approved by the Washington County Road Commission. Uh, that will, that will typically occur at the site plan review stage. The um essentials, essential facilities and services uh, will have to be approved by the Washington County Health Department uh for this site. And then, starting on page four of our report, we go through the uh six special land use criteria that are supposed to be met for each project. And we find that those standards have been met. Uh, typically, those standards are, as I mentioned, uh, when I started, those standards are set up to try to help determine if a special land use will have um impacts to uh the, the township in general, the neighbors that surround the property, and to the site itself. And in this, in this case, you'll see from our comments that we believe that they've met, that this project uh, uh, meets or can meet uh each of those standards, and we have no concerns with that, there's no variances being requested. A site plan will be the second step in this process, which the planning commission will see uh after um conditional land use approval, if that occurs. And at this point, uh, our office is recommending approval of the conditional land use for fire station number two to be located at nine hundred South Wagner Road.
Uh, question for Mr. Yuan, I just heard you say that a unique situation that the township didn't have to go through this process. Um, so with that in mind, I know that Crossroads is gonna tap into our sewer system. And we have rules on where that exists. Is there a potential for this parcel to tap into the existing? You would do an extension of that sewer system that's coming through for Crossroads? And would that be a benefit to the township?
It would, you know, it, it would seem to be a benefit, um, I I don't know what the sewers, uh, sewer, sewer service um boundaries. What the implications of that would be, whether, you know, for Siobhan Township to make a change to the sewer service district or a fire station um, would seem to be different than, you know, eh, you know, extending sewer for a new residential development. But nonetheless, it would be a expansion to our sewer service district. And um, I, I, I believe there are certain steps that have to go through, and it's my kind of rudimentary understanding that uh the city of Ann Arbor also has to agree to that. So um, that would be, tha- that's my understanding of the situation. A- and I think that would be a better question for uh the township engineer and perhaps even the township attorney.
Yeah, maybe Chief couldn't want me to bring that up at this point.
It, it, it would be, it definitely would be a benefit to the township.
But it would be a significant change.
Would it be a benefit? Expansion of the, of the sewage and sewer plan is all, you know, the sewer district is a benefit period to us.
He wouldn't put in a
Okay, I heard that, that's a statement, but why?
He would not put in a septic system.
Because any, anytime you have, you know, sewer, sewage that's in sewers is far better than in a septic field, you know, it's more civilized, for example, I mean, you know, it's just better.
Well, the treatment is more assured.
What?
The long-term treatment of the sewage is more assured.
And so the, the fire department would pay so as part of their budget, I'm just thinking this through, the fire department would have to pay sewer service fees.
Like they do now.
Like they do now, for the current
Right. As opposed to maintaining huge sewer span in that district um to get city of Ann Arbor to
Is that a question for the applicant?
The applicant has a, has a response.
Commissioner slash trustee Brant, thank you for the question. So, uh, I can tell you that absolutely we're approaching that uh as a possibility. We are planning this project with a septic field, uh, as we are outside the, the district. Uh, we have engaged our engineer uh to, to determine what may be feasible. And they think since it's a government building directly adjoining a private development, we could work with that developer to add in our building on their project. Uh, so we wouldn't need extension of water mains or anything, we would literally just need one lateral sewage line going to their, their property. Uh, and that would alleviate a number of concerns for us, a we would not have to deal with a septic uh field. Um, uh, you probably don't know this, but our, our existing fire station is on a septic field. It is, so we have both that and the oil-water separator pumped annually, uh, so that there is uh some maintenance there. And part of the planning process, uh, through the health department for the septic field, we had to engage Eagle. Uh, because with the uh floor drains in there where we're washing vehicles, uh, we cannot combine those. I, I, I take that back, we can combine sewage with the, the apparatus bay washwater, however, um, anytime we're using uh, uh, enclosed building for washing of vehicles, it triggers an Eagle groundwater discharge permit. So as part of the project, we're contemplating those drains for the apparatus bay washwater separate from the sewer, uh, the whatever sewage treatment we decide on the septic field. Going through an oil-water separator, through a settling tank, and through their own individual uh drain field, which then needs to be we have to have a private contractor come out and sample that at various uh stages, and also an ongoing um, uh, annual e- uh Eagle discharge permit, so yes, if we tap into sewer, it's gonna cost us, but we're paying to pump the thing every year, plus the Eagle requirements for the bay, so I, I think it would either be a wash or
And two separate systems.
Correct, two separate systems with two separate backup fields with everything goes along with that. So cost-wise, it may even be a positive if we can tap into the sewer, sewage system and use that sewer. Uh, but environmentally, it would be better. So yes, that is being contemplated.
I'm saying that the sewer s- the sanitary sewer system does not go down Wagner past your property to get to
Correct, it's uh, it's located on Liberty.
No, I see this over here in the sanitary sewer. It's across the street
From
from you, right across Wagner from this property that we're talking about.
Are you sure that's not a water main? Cause there is
It says sanitary sewer service area, and I don't know the legal basis for this map that's in our master plan, but this is where I got it, so I don't know where that's legally defined, do you?
In the agreement
So there's the, there's where you gotta go to see where it really is, but it seems to indicate that it's across the street going down to High Point.
That, that could very well be.
And so if you've got this with Wagner, you're done.
Yes.
So if your engineer is looking into it, they should know all about that.
Yeah, from, from what I could tell, the closest sewer would be on um, on Liberty Road uh, north of, uh, on south side of the road, I'm not sure which. Uh, but I think that you, you're absolutely right, that whole uh southeast corner is on uh sanitary sewer. Although I don't know where it goes from High Point, uh, I guess the High Point is connected, so I don't know if it uh drains to the east and to the uplands or where, so I bet I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, cause they could also talk with OHM too.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, Kathleen?
A different one than the sanitary sewer system?
All right, next question.
I don't wanna interrupt. Are you done?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Yuan just informed us that the, the city would have to agree to that.
Right.
And do you anticipate getting that, I mean, how long, well, let me ask this, how long do you think the build will take?
So we anticipate right now, um, with uh, a break, groundbreaking early spring. And we're twelve to sixteen months uh fully.
So groundbreaking in the spring?
Correct.
And completed when?
Uh, twelve to sixteen months after that. So we'll again, early to, early, early spring twenty twenty-seven is our anticipated uh opening date.
Do they have any ladder trick?
Yes, sir.
So do you think that you would be able to get the, let's just play out this idea of hooking into the sewer system? Do you think you'd be able to get permission from the city of Ann Arbor in a
If I was a betting man, I'd bet the utilities director's already asked that question.
Okay.
They're working on it.
We're, we're, we're exploring every avenue to make it happen.
So you, so you're looking at groundbreaking in the spring of twenty-six?
Correct.
And then opening in the spring of
Correct, I apologize if I misspoke, yes.
No questions? Okay, then we'll open up um, public hearing to our public, and there is no one in township hall, is there anyone online?
No.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to close our public hearing. By Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Fletcher. Um, any further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, public hearing is closed at nine oh two.
Thank you, good to see you, Doug.
Yep, miss you too.
Um, so with the um withdrawing of the quick trip submission, uh, there, there will be no that, and we don't have to take any action on it, so I think it'll just die on its own until it comes back. Yes, um, so we'll just go to, yes.
So you're getting in terms of the business section.
Right, new business session.
You don't think we just need a, a motion to postpone?
No, because they withdrew their petition.
Okay.
Their application.
So we should have taken that off of, okay, anyway.
But we, we held the public hearing because it was a notice of this public hearing. Okay, so we'll take up the uh conditional use for the fire station. Um, Doug, did you have anything you wanted to add to? Okay.
No, I do not, no.
Okay, um, discussion among uh planning commissioners, and then again, this is the conditional use. Yes.
I, this is not a review of the site plan, but I know you've included some things in here just to give us all a flavor for what you're doing. I wondered if we might make a suggestion that you might put air quality monitors on this building rather than rely on the you know, crossroads to put those on, that, I think that was in imposed on crossroads by the, by the Board of Trustees. I'm not sure if it was made a requirement, or if they volunteered it, but maybe we wanna do that right here on this, that's just a suggestion to throw out there. You're right across from that gravel bit, if you said, alright, so some
And yeah, and you can uh check with the, cause there are different types of air monitors and, and it would be good to have what that is looking for the things that VOCs, and also the other thing, um, um, just particulates because of uh the dust mitigation.
You'll want it for your own health.
Me too, I mean, your guys are gonna be right there, so I just thought that might be good.
So I, I have absolutely no knowledge of that, but we're happy to do whatever we need to do there, that's a great idea.
And I think, oh, I was just gonna say, we do have uh an updated landscape ordinance that if you um ask the uh planners, um, but they can get that to you. We, it hasn't gone through the approval process, but we've, we've, we're kind of, yeah. Um, keeping it to have a public hearing on multiple ordinances at once.
The only other thing that I wanted to suggest might be, uh, I don't know whether you have considered the need or the use of this building for HVA, for, I mean, for the ambulance services, are you planning on housing any there?
So we're not yet, um, in the future, if the township does choose to contract with a provider, that, that would be an option. Uh, it is sized a, a note that we could do that.
Okay, good.
We, we decided that uh future proof the building.
Okay.
Uh, and I think the only other thing was um of coordinating perhaps with the crossroad site plan on connectivity, um, and, yeah. Absolutely, okay, any other comments? Now, we don't have any model motions tonight. But that, it's important if um someone wants to make the motion that, that we need to um go through the with criteria, that each of those criteria has been found, um.
Those criteria are listed by
In Carlisle Warpin's report, so if someone wants to take a stab at that.
I would. What else wants to?
Okay. All right, look at this, joint effort.
With a little help from my friends. On the action of CU twenty-five zero zero four PSP twenty-five zero zero eight, Siobhan Township Fire Station Number Two new building, the planning commission has reviewed the application and the inputs from our planner and I don't think we
And just fire.
And the fires, chief. Uh, and finds that, no, and see and comes to the conclusions of, uh,
That it meets, that it meets section thirty-six. Yeah.
That the findings that it meets section thirty-six two twenty-four one dash six, specifically that it will be harmonious in accordance with the objectives and regulations of this ordinance. Two, will be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in the vicinity. Three, that the proposed use will be served adequately at essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, and fire projection, drainage ways, refuse disposal, or that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of this proposed use shall be able to provide adequately any such service. Four, that the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring uses, persons, properties, or the public welfare. Five, that the proposed use will not create additional requirements and public costs for public facilities and services that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. And finally, six, will be compatible with the township's adopted master plan.
And we recommend to the
Board of Trustees approval of this application.
This conditional use.
This conditional use of
Okay. Is there support from All right, any further discussion? A roll call vote?
Hyde, yes, Brant.
Yes.
Hindle.
Yes.
Fletcher.
Yes.
Walsh. Yes, Moore.
Yes.
Culberson.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
And and thank you for coming and going through the process.
Happy to. And just thank you for safe planning soon, though.
All right.
All right. All right, then um we're moving on to our um unfinished business, House Collection on uh chicken ordinance. And we have a updated chicken ordinance in our cabinet.
Thought it looked good, seemed to encompass everything that we have been discussing about. Um and I see that they changed general standards to make it abundantly clear about other aspects of animal.
Can can somebody tell me on general standards, number three, what is the difference between class two and class two animals? That doesn't make sense to me. Horses, goats, et cetera.
Uh go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, the the, so in the definition section of the zoning ordinance, um that did not change uh based on these uh this amendment. There are separate definitions of class one, class two, and class three animals. And they have to do with um partly with size and and, you know, whether they're domestic or not and that sort of thing. Uh, class one, I believe, are horses and goats, class, you know, or horses and cows. I believe class two were um goats and that's kind of size animal. And then class three are dogs and cats and chickens and stuff, smaller kind of animals. I mean, I uh so anyway, it has to do with the size, the size generally of the animal.
But what does it mean, class two and class two animals?
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's a typo there, because it says under general sta- standards uh three, it says we're class two and class two. I mean, we're not changing anything. I think it's just a typo.
Class two and just say class two animals?
Well, no, I think it's, oh, class one, okay. Yeah, I think I think it was, I think it's just a typo.
Yeah.
Because we're not changing that standard.
Okay.
I.
Class one and class two.
Yeah, I'll talk.
Thank you.
Yep, I think it's, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question.
It's okay, it's all right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think it is class one and class two animals.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, no, it is in thirty six, one thirty five, general standards, you know, A three, where class two and class three animals are not maintained.
Okay, two and three, okay.
Okay, so it should say class two and class three.
Okay.
So class two, the second time.
Should be class three.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for finding that.
Just took me a little longer to get there. Sorry, well, I already had a pull-up mentioned.
So what we did is we took the chickens out of being um the normal other subsection. Regulated and they're regulated because we're allowing more chickens. Okay. Then.
We don't need to refer to this in in there? Oh, yes, no. General standards, okay, never mind. And I'm assuming that everybody's still comfortable with the language on um.
On the predator.
Predator roof.
I got nothing else to say.
Suggestion of putting.
Resistant.
Well, quotes.
Yeah, under, but.
You don't need to, I guess.
So I have another question.
Mm-hmm.
Under D, same page, section three, six, thirty six dash one thirty five, D,
Mm-hmm.
two, where no more than six female chickens has maybe kept has been crossed through. The number of hens shall be based on property as described below. Hens are female. Are we, that's intended to say hens? And then what if you have roosters?
That's three, look down further.
So.
So if you're point two five acres, you can only have five hens. If you want, you can have four hens and one rooster.
Okay, that's what I was. Totally, um, is what I was looking for. Thank you, thank you.
Any other?
The adopted.
Yeah, to recommend, well, I think, yeah, so we're we're kind of stacking up a bunch of ordinances so we can recommend uh that it be placed on a public hearing, basically is the next step. I know.
Okay, so it goes to the public hearing before us?
Right, yeah.
Right, before it goes to the B O T.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can check the box on this one and let it sit totally ready and get all the others.
I think it's done.
Okay, um then I'll entertain a motion for uh, yeah.
I'll support.
Supported by Hyde, and the motion shall read that um the um that the uh planning commission um deems the revised ordinance ready for public hearing.
By Hindle, was that?
Yeah, it was by Hindle and supported by Hyde. Okay, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Another one down. Yes, okay.